Ladies and gentlemen, the board is back in session. Please govern yourself accordingly. We are ready for item four B, the door tag process fee. April, will you please help us do this?
I thought I did it.
What we are requesting is to eliminate the door tag process and the fee. Placing a door tag is, it is very time-consuming for staff. It is very ineffective because residents are not getting the notification. They go on front doors that are rarely utilized because most people enter through their garages. If they're left on a front door without a screen, it could blow away. If it's left on the screen door, it could blow away. The residents call in and customer service staff take a beating over this door tag process. We rare, the software issue that we touched upon a little earlier, what is that we, we struggle with getting the $10 posted into the system and where, because, because our bills are, are available online, getting it all streamlined and getting the appropriate sticker on a door tag and getting staff out on the streets, it's, it's taking like a week. Last time we did it, I mean, the phones just blow up and probably most of the time because customers are so upset, I'm not even sure, you know, that I can't give you a revenue amount that we're giving up because the policy does allow some discretion for the fiscal analyst to potentially eliminate some penalties and, and the fee. So I don't think we'd be giving up that much. It's actually going to be cheaper, I believe, or I think, was it, was it less expensive?
It was less expensive.
It was less expensive to actually mail out the notices, to mail out a letter. And so what we did when we talked to the print company, we can even go cheaper than that and we've designed a postcard to mail out. And it won't have the, the dollar amount. We're trying to, trying to simplify it so we can do this process timely. It'll be a postcard that we mail out. It'll, the only thing that'll be changing on it is a date, that you need to make your payment by this date and it's, it's basically a shut-off notice. So I think we can really, really streamline this process, save a lot of headache by the residents, be more effective with the shut-off process and the notification by eliminating the door tags and going to the postcard.
If we approve this, and I'm inclined to, could you put it on your calendar to come back to us in six or eight months with a review of how effective it's been?
Okay.
And I don't mean this the way it's gonna sound, but if we don't have people running around putting tags on doors, maybe they can fill some holes or do some.[204.12][204.12][laughing] I know that's a bad, that was a bad shot and I apologize for it, but they, but they're, they're, we oughta be able to get some reassignment of things that need to be done from some of those folks instead of putting tags on doors. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, and I do, I do agree. And that week that we do the door tags, so it's every, every other month, we have that session, and that week, I know pretty much what happens is the work orders that typically come in throughout the day just get backlogged and, you know, then we have to double time it and compensate the following week because we're backlog on the work orders that come in. So I'm not sure that we can, from this particular change alone, show more productivity, but we are addressing a lot of things and, you know, there, with the new, with the new utilities manager coming on, I'm sure there'll be some, some reassignments and reallocation of resources there.
Questions from board members?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Motion for approval.
No, I've got questions.
I'm so sorry. I was looking at you before.
I know you guys have read all this stuff, but here's some of the things that jumped out at me. Page, I will get to them. Let's try, oh, what the heck, let's try 56. Now, first comment, even before getting to page 56, is to send somebody a postcard which is visible to anybody, even if the mailman drops it on somebody's lawn by mistake. Are we gonna have something that isn't enclosed that's making a statement that the person is behind in paying a utility bill? I don't think a postcard is applicable. I think a postcard is a huge mistake. Huge mistake. Secondly is, the thing that should be utilized is going to be a certified letter. Thirdly, I can't imagine if you knew, if, not you, but if anybody, and this obviously has been going on for some period of time, why somebody wouldn't have stuck the doggone thing on the garage. I mean, sooner or later, as me, as a team person, would've said, "This is futile and it's not working and I keep coming back to this same house over and over again." Again, if anything, it oughta be a certified letter and other things. The person, I, I get really hung up on titles. I don't think that a person has to be a fiscal analyst to be doing whatever, but they can waive the fee, the late charge, six times. What kind of business is this? I mean, we're here, we're in Gateway. If somebody isn't paying their bill, it stops. They can jump up and down, they can yell and scream, et cetera. They're delinquent on their bill. Pay up. It seems like we're running around after this, and in one case, it was mentioned, a number of 400 people were late and that Melissa would knock it down from 400 to, I believe the number was 200 or 250 on her own. Who gave her that authority?
And, and I do not disagree with you, Mr. Newbauer. One of the things on our radar is that we need to revamp the policies. I am not comfortable with staff having that discretion. By changing and eliminating the door tag fee, we are going to be able to send a late notice to all accounts that have outstanding balances and are not paid at, by, by that due date. So we are going to be able to capture more of those customers. And you're absolutely right, yes. Sometimes it's 400 or 500 and what they've been doing, because it's almost impossible to place that many door tags within the amount of time that we have, they've been knocking it down to, you know, they, they make a discretionary call, I guess, for the more significant balances and tack them. So I think this way, the letter is going to, we can do a letter. If you don't wanna do a postcard, we can do a letter. I'm not, I, I don't have an answer for you on the certified, whether the, whether our, our print company can do each of them certified, and I would imagine that that would be pretty costly to send, to send 400 or 500 certified letters. I, if, I, I don't imagine that other utilities send certified letters either, but I'm more than happy we can go back to the letter approach if, if we feel that we want to give that discretion. There's not going to be any balance or anything like that. It is just a, it is just a notice, but that's, I, I will follow the direction of the board.
I'm happy with the postcard.
I'm happy with the postcard 'cause I don't see how the postcard is any less discreet than a door tag. Everybody sees the door tag on your house.
I'd have to agree with Supervisor Newbauer, though. We don't use a postcard anywhere. The door hanger is a bad idea, but a letter, just a regular letter is fine. And that's typically the way most utility companies will communicate with their users.
So we're talking, the increase would be cost of the envelope, and I would imagine that the postcard versus paper insert would probably be, I would imagine it'd be close to a wash. You're only talking about a few cents difference between a postcard and a letter.
If that's the recommendation, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, you could, you could buy pre-printed letters that are already in an envelope.
The print company does this for us.
And the print company that puts the name and address on it. They're gonna be more expensive than postcards.
We, we provide the, we provide the template of the letter, of the letter, and then they, they populate it, but we can go back to the letter approach.
I'm just curious to see what the cost difference would be.
I don't have the exact cost. I just know that staff, when they were working on this, we, it's even less than what was presented here in this comparison for the postcard.
Just 'cause you don't have to, I mean, the cost is the insertion. It has nothing to do with the material.
And I think there's a mailing rate difference. I, I think that was the significant part, was there's a mailing rate difference for, for the postcard. But if we want, if we wanna do a letter, we can.
When somebody is late, the penalty is borne by them, not us, not us, and it's something that we don't waive. It's something that's part of the agreement from the GFC, and it's something that they signed from the GFC, and it's something that we should have an insert in the next bill that we send out regarding the fact of late payments, and there seems to have been an increase in the late payments, et cetera, et cetera. Here's what we're going to do in the future, and especially those people, if they're consistent late people, then, I'm sorry, that one, in, there's two different things, by the way. The penalty in one part of your, your dissertation says it's one and a half percent, in another part of your dissertation, it says it's one percent, but it never says it's one and a half percent or one percent of what.
The policy is one and a half percent.
Well, in another part, if you review, it says one percent. So whatever that number is, that should be the conclusion. It should be a penalty that's not waived and it should offset the cost of this because we're paying additional staff time, we're paying for the mailing, et cetera, and that's a righteous cost.
So you said something about insert. Are you saying that instead of a postcard, it would be an insert into the next bill?
No. I, what, it's twofold, two-pronged. Number one, we should be sending out something right now that reminds people that their payment has gotta be prompted on time. Then after that, no one can say that, "I didn't know." Oh, yes you did. And there'll be people that'll always say, in the credit world, "But I've been with you for 15 years and you've never done well."
You've never done it to me before.
Exactly. Exactly. Then after that, those penalties that are there and they can, it's a righteous cost and it's there, and nobody should have the right to waive that, if you will.
Well, if I, if I can make a suggestion, so we don't muddy the waters too bad, is make the motion to approve a letter, if, if that's your, if that's your pleasure.
Well, let's stop right there. Margaret and I, I think, are happy with the postcard idea, and I know, and I know where Gary is, and I'd like to hear where Doug, as far as the postcard idea is concerned.
Well, the first is eliminate the door tag. That's, that's the first order of business. The second is to, there is, agree that there will be a notification via mail, whether that is postcard or letter. I'm still on the fence. I mean, postcard is cost-effective, but maybe to go the extra step and have something inside a letter, 'cause cable company utilities, I've never seen, "You're late on a payment" postcard, so, but I would like to know what the, what the cost difference.
Another thing to consider is, you know, we don't want the postcard to get shuffled in with the, the trash mail that we get, you know, folded up in, in something. So I'm, I'm, if that's, if that's what we wanna do, but one of the clarifications I was trying to make is, let's not, if I can suggest, get too deep into policy conversation right now. We have policies, we have rules. All of the utility stuff is listed in the rules, and it confuses staff if we make a topside recommendation as far as not being able to waive the penalties. We even have a payment plan we've been following. We have a document that says we have a payment plan. And so I'd rather bring those items back to you as a policy change, so we can be consistent with our documentation that the board has adopted currently.
Okay. Let's, let's see if we can put this to bed, so to speak. We're gonna discontinue the door hangers.
Door tag.
And we are going to send notices as soon as somebody is delinquent with a letter. And the letter can be pre-printed by the printing company, so all you have to do is fill in the name and address and put it in the mail. Certified mail is not required. Are we happy with that?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yeah.
Gary?
Again, the cost of the, the cost of the communication to them is borne by the person that's made the mistake. Not us. Never should be.
We, all we need to do is just make sure that our late fee would cover that.
Yeah, I believe so, because right now, as April mentioned in her memo, this, the $10 tag fee is not even in the rules as being the charge or fee. So that's another reason why to remove that.
We gotta, yeah.
And, yeah, that's correct. And so the late fee, I think, is, is designed, Mr. Newbauer, to cover that aspect, the cost associated with it, so I think, right now. And then later on, if we wanna do a conference and look at the rules, rates, fees, and charges, we can look at some other approach, I think.
Yeah, but I think we also need to make sure that, again, you review the one and a half and one percent and look at what you've given us. And in addition to that, by the way, the stuff from Lee County, that looks like one of the math formulas that we did for computing the speed at which the airplane went into Anaiski.
Stall, stall speed. Okay. All right. I stated the motion that I believe all of us are happy with, that we're gonna discontinue the door tags effective with the next billing, and we're gonna send notices of non-payment in an envelope through the US mail.
Effective the current billing cycle.
Effective the current billing.
That's what I meant to say. Motion for approval.
I so moved.
Yeah, Doug?
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote, four, zero. Thank you very much. Aquagenics Lake Maintenance amended for pond standards. April, will you help us, please?
Okay. On this one, we're asking to approve two amendments to the Aquagenics contract, including, so I know we talked about in the budget process, we talked about the pond standard and what we need to do to get us there. We talked about the $53,000 that we added to, for the maintenance in the 2017 budget. So what we need to do is some preemptive work to get the ponds in a condition to where we can start actually maintaining and monitoring at our new standards. So what this does is, we're asking for the $30,000 to be, amend, amend the contract for the 30,000, which is gonna go in and thin everything out down to where we need, need the laterals to be. And then the $8,986 is for the remainder of this fiscal year, which was, is that, that's too much, right? So that's August and September. So we'd actually be running, doing the preliminary thinning in July and then maintaining for August and September.
Yeah, and which, which lakes are, is, is this, is that in there? I can't remember.
On, it's all of them, is, all of the Gateway Lakes.
It's, it's all, right? Okay. I just wanna make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay.
May I have the motion for approval?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve it. I have one question.
All right, may, may I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right. Please go ahead, Margaret.
And the question I had is, and it kind of follow-up on Doug's, that this includes all the lakes, but not all of the lakes are gonna require thinning.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's what he said in consideration. Ellen Molly.
At Tinkelman, for the record. Ellen Molly went out and prepared basically an inventory and then worked with Doug and then, or George, and then he put the numbers together, and I thought there was a schedule that listed the, the numbers. I don't, I don't remember, but yeah, every lake is different.
Yeah, page 64.
Every lake's different.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Ed.
There is page, page 64.
Page 62. First item, building, maintenance, and repairs, we go to the other side where it says other notes, and it says, "Cost shared with Pelican Preserve and Enterprise Fund." Why Pelican Preserve?
'Cause it's this building.
Why isn't Stony Brook there?
'Cause we pay into the 001 fund, you don't. Pelican Preserve pays nothing into the 001 fund.
Really? 185 acres?
You pay $0 into the general fund, the 001 fund. Stony Brook pays the full amount into the 001 fund every year.
And I provided this document just to, just to recap that it, I started down at the bottom that it was the $54,000 that we had discussed during the budget probe.
Do you have any other questions, Margaret?
Nope.
Doug?
Nope.
Gary?
Do you have no comment on that?
I don't. Okay. You?
No. I, I made my comment, but go ahead, whatever.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote, four, zero. Staff report at district council.
I get one walk-on item from.
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you to do it under District Manager, but if you wanna do it, if you wanna do it now. Go ahead. Go ahead now.
Okay, I apologize for bringing your walk-on. I know we don't like them. And I'll just walk through the sheet. It's, it's pretty simple. We need to, we're kind of at a stalemate. The Landscape Advisory Committee wants to go one direction with completing the medians at the End of Gateway Boulevard, and management feels that we should go another direction. So I went back and I looked at some of the documentation, I read some of the minutes, and I was aware that the board had, had made comments before about wanting to be involved in some of the decision-making process. So not, not knowing just yet exactly what my role is with the committees, I wanted to make sure that it came before you. So what we have is, we're trying to finish up the, the large landscaping project that we did at the four medians at the End of Gateway Boulevard, and we, we reviewed the plans. Really, everything is, is up there according to plan. There was a lot of confusion. I do, I do see where we kind of, kind of got astray. There was a lot of things that affected the perceptions, the original plans that we looked at, what was, what was put out on the website. The revision didn't get re-vetted to the Landscape Advisory Committee or, or the board. And then we had the transition of Scott and I. So there was a lot happening. There was a lot of things that kind of created confusion with that project. But everything is in place according to the revised plans, and this is gonna, this is gonna finish up that project. We've got at the, at the first median closest to 82, that's where we kept all of the palms. And so we've got palms right in the bullnoses where typically the annuals are going on the other medians. But it's very difficult to get the annuals there because of the, the root balls on the palms. So the Landscape Advisory Committee voted to, to approve cutting down the, the palm root balls, shaving them off, which is gonna take a radius all the way around the, the palm.
These are the big royal palms.
The royal palms, yes. To shave the roots down and put in some soil, it'd have to be, initially, it'd have to be a good 12 inches. I've got some pictures here, if you, if you care to see them. But we don't think, management doesn't think that that's the best thing to do for the palms, because of the health of the palms, plus it's gonna cost additional funding, it's gonna be routine maintenance. Each time they replant the annuals, it's gonna have to be all dug up and, and start fresh.
Whose idea was this?
The, the Landscape Advisory Committee would like annuals on the bullnose.
I understood that.
And in order to get them there, we'd have to shave the root ball in order to get them, get the annuals to survive.
Hold on just one second, please.
Yes.
When, when I saw this, I heard about it, actually, and I went and looked, and there's so little space there that I can't imagine trying to shave the roots of those trees.
It's going to be difficult.
Being, being a person that drives past that median every day, I personally would much rather see, just to plant the peanut, we're gonna have annuals on the other bullnoses, on the other medians, and I think that to try and do anything differently at that median and risk killing those trees on the ends would just be silly, to my opinion.
Or, I mean, there, there might be some structural damage that, as far as the integrity of the, of the tree itself, you start cutting away root ball.
And, and I believe we also tried to approach those medians as, you know, trying to, it's a very busy, dangerous intersection, so we've been meeting with Manscape. We had our second monthly meeting this morning, and we're also, you know, trying to consider safety of staff, safety of their, of the Manscape staff, and to have them out there doing that heavy of landscaping to cut, keep the root balls shaved down, I, I just didn't think that it was, it was the, the best way to go. Where right now, we can, they think they can get the, the perennial peanut to survive over the top of it, and the ones that's, if, the ones that don't survive, it's fairly inexpensive to replace them. Manscape's not going to guarantee the perennial peanuts because it's not, you know, it's not an optimal environment for them either, but they are, they have been surviving, and it's fairly low, low cost to maintain them there.
I'll make a motion to approve option two.
May I have a second?
Yeah, and we're talking about, there's only like this much space, right?
There's not even that much.
And you, you would prefer.
It's more like that.
You'd prefer the peanut over just having it grass?
Well, the peanut's already, the peanut's already in the center of the median. It's just the very ends on the outside of the two big soils.
It just provides some additional color and place of.
Yeah, and, and on the one end, there's, it doesn't even look like there's that much space between.
And if we find it doesn't, doesn't work, we can put grass there or something. Okay. I'll second that.
The thing with the peanut is it require, the grass would require they'd have to at least be weed-eating it. The perennial peanut isn't gonna require little in the way of maintenance.
Just edging, 'cause it does later.
Give a motion in a second. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote, four, zero.
Thank you.
'Cause you're giving me to edge.
Okay. Mr. Council, District Council.
Yes, sir. Three items, if I may. Great point. This is a follow-up to the conversation about the Rambo Consulting matter, and retrieved the minutes off the district website from the April 21st, 2016 board meeting. And in that meeting, the board discussed terminating the arrangement and had a review of the contract. In the discussion, the motion by the board was to terminating the Rambo Consulting contract upon the July 1st, 2016 termination date. The agreement with Rambo, plus its addendum provides, it's an agreement from October 15th, 2015, through October 14th, 2016, but the addendum deed says after July 1st, 2016, GS, CDD has the right to unilaterally terminate the agreement. So it suggests that on July 2nd, 2016, now a letter be forwarded, that's to follow-up with the board's action in April to terminate the agreement. And we will, Cal, if you wanna send that a rape provision. Just a real simple order.
Yeah, that's what I think I remember. It was, it was July termination. That's what we need to, okay. Not, not any time prior. That makes it, so I remember that.
Thank you. Cal, did you make a note on that, please?
And the second item is, I hand, at your table today was just for informational purposes only, was a letter to WCI with regards to the method in which they were engaging construction activities at Prado in Pelican Reserve that caused some roadway flooding, some other flooding. And this is just a follow-up to the action taken by district staff and district engineer, April Tyler, once they found out the issue last week, on, prior to June 10th, jumped into action, sort of jumped RWA, the consulting firm, engineering firm for WCI. And this is just a follow-up to, as Tyler had mentioned or indicated, that there could be in the, down the, down the road, some subsurface damage to some of the district infrastructure or the roadways. This is basically putting WCI on notice, and Danny, if you wanna elaborate some more or not.
I'll, I'll discuss it under.
Okay. This is just an introduction to it. So this is putting them on notice. WCI on notice.
Questions for the attorney?
And then lastly, and it sort of ties in, if you recall back at the time, the district entered into the contract with Fordline for the meter replacement project, because of my opinions concerning a possible conflict of interest or doom business with one's agency issue with regards to Severn Trent, being the district manager and separate division of Severn Trent, being the installer, subcontractor to Fordline, that the board adopted a resolution designating certain individuals, initially Yvonne Velez, and after he departed, Terry Hamlin and Ken Hall, to be the project managers. Since the contract was amended to remove Severn ST as the installer, and we had and we've had brief communication between April and I with regards to this, whether or not it'd be appropriate at this point in time to ask the board to, I'll, I'll call it, rescind those prior resolutions, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but just trying to have that discussion, and authorize April to be the coordinator with Tyler and Danny at Tetra Tech, working with Fordline and district staff to finish up the remainder of the project, including any audit Fordline will perform. I believe it is appropriate. I believe that, that conflict no longer exists.
Have you prepared a resolution?
No, I did not. Once again, it was a, this is just something that popped up Tuesday, I think, between April and I, and I don't have the resolution, but if the board will authorize the chairman to sign a resolution rescinding the two prior resolutions, that would be in order.
You'll, you'll prepare the appropriate resolution?
Yes, sir.
If we do that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Newbauer, please.
Why aren't we using the new utilities person?
No, boy.
Wouldn't he be the better person to handle that? Doesn't he have the greater experience?
Don't know yet.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of timing because I think right now, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, working with Fordline.
The audit's starting Monday.
Yeah.
But wouldn't, just to answer Gary's point, the utilities manager will be engaged in this work?
Yeah, yeah.
So as they're onboarding, they'll get.
You're going to hand that off to him?
Well, I don't have handoff from the right.
Yeah, the audit starts Monday and he's to arrive on, on Monday. So I think what we were, I think what we were wanting to clarify is, of course, with, with Mr. Shoemaker, there is, there is no conflict. But I think we just wanted to clarify that I can be involved with staff. The audit is going to heavily involve Leslie. We've got a new utilities manager coming on. It's going to take a while to get him up to speed. And so as, we just want to make sure that it was, it was okay to have.
To eliminate that ban.
I think it makes sense now, just because April has history with the work. And if it was two months from now, it might make sense to have that utilities manager do it. But I'm comfortable with, with April. And the utilities manager will be engaged and hopefully will get ramped up rather quickly. Is there any bearing on the, the work in place of transitioning April under, under the board? Does that have any bearing on?
No, sir. I would say no. And I think as a, as a, in a method to wrap all this together, I think it'd be appropriate then basically for the board to, I'll call, remove the ban on an ST employee, that is, the operations manager, participating in the project. And then having the new utilities manager coordinate with her once he gets on board. That way you have both of those roles to address those concerns.
I think we also ought to have the utilities man, the new utilities manager at the next meeting.
President? President, okay.
I would like to bring all of the new utility staff and introduce them to the board.
Good. Now, without having to repeat the resolution which the attorney is going to prepare for us, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote four zero. Thank you.
Looking for the chairman.
You finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Engineer?
I have one item and a follow-up to the rain event. So actually, today, we received news from DEP regarding the SRF process. Good news, they've completed, DEP has completed their review of the facilities plan that was adopted by resolution on the May nineteenth meeting. And they're just awaiting clearing from the environmental review and clearing, official clearing from the clearinghouse. And their intent is to have this on the August, their August public hearing, which means at that point, we can then move forward with the loan process. So that's really good news because there was a possibility that would be bumped out till later in the fall. So that's, that's good news. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask Danny a question on that?
Yes.
Is it prudent for you, as the drafter of that plan, or somebody from the district, when present at that public hearing, in case?
No.
It's better than that?
Nobody ever goes to those things. And, and also, to, to the degree of the SRF process, the reviewer actually called me up personally and reminded, reminded me of the water quality. If you recall, last year, we submitted for a water quality grant. We had early indication that we would actually get a grant, and they later, it was later, you know, disapproved. But he did encourage us to, to resubmit. So Tyler actually spoke earlier this week with the, the person that's over that program. So, you know, we, we may be looking at possibly recommending to, to do that process again. That was part of the whole process with, with Ramba. But the actual application process is something we can fill out and, and get it in. And you really don't need Ramba for all, what he was going to be good for. What that, that group was going to be good for was on the legislative side. This is not a legislative grant. It's straight through DEP. So the second item was just continuing on what Tony was talking about on the rain event. Tony had drafted the letter to WCI, basically placing them on notice. We also notified the Water Management District, talked to them, and Mark White with the Water Management District has come out, so they've documented it. So it'll, it'll further, you know, put WCI on, on notice that if there's any damage that results from the activities that took place, that they're, they're responsible. So. Does she have anything else? That's all I have.
Who is going to determine if there is any damage as a result of this flooding? And who's going to be responsible for sending the bill to WCI?
Well, the, the whole purpose of putting them on notice is, we, we don't know, and we may not know for some time. You may not know, you may never have any issues. But sometimes these things don't pop up until later. The damage, some of it may have happened, may be underground. If there's damage, if, if there's been compromising of subsurface materials, it's not going to surface necessarily immediately. So letting them know that, you know, we know these activities resulted in flooding, that if anything happens to that, we're, we're putting them on notice regarding.
This is an insurance policy that.
If you will.
Okay.
Yeah, and as part of that, I guess the question would be, we might have some staff discussion whether or not we should at this point in time go out and check the subsurface, the subgrade, the base, the subbase of the roadway system and others to ascertain the current condition. So in case something does happen in the future resulting from this flooding event.
Well, part of the.
We can tag them because subsurface stuff is always so much fun to prove.
Yeah, I, I think definitely as of when, Friday, when the event happened, it was too early because everything was, you know, flooded. But I think we're at a point now where the water levels have receded. They've corrected the issue. So, yeah, it, it would be prudent to go out and do some investigations.
Anything else?
Yeah, just, Danny, real quick, in regards to grants, is it part of, I don't know if it's within your scope or what's something Tetra Tech provides to us, but is identifying grant opportunities not just specific to, to any one particular area, but it seems like, I know there's grants out there.
We can. It's not something that, I mean, I'm familiar with the type of grants from the typical day-to-day business that, that we do. And we're talking about the, the improvements, for instance, to the lakes. We're familiar with the grants that you would typically qualify for. The grants that, there are grants out there, for instance, for sport lighting.
I, I'm just talking about, just specific to.
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're.
Really, like just the, the lakes and.
The, the lakes, there are, there are primarily two grants that you're going to qualify for. One is this water quality grant, which is through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The other is trying to get direct appropriations through the state. The governor we have presently is very pro improvement for water-related items, whether that's drainage or utilities.
Okay.
So that, that happens. But, and that's why Ramba was brought in a year ago. And sometimes you're successful, sometimes you're not. What, what hurts, what hurts this district is your, you know, your demographics. Yeah, so you're, you know, you don't typically qualify for some of the grants that might be out there otherwise for poor, lower incomes. Yeah, yeah, that would, that would help.
All right, thanks, Danny. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, just one question we may want to mention and maybe note from a staff perspective that just caught, popped up in my mind at the time that WCI approaches the district about accepting the conveyance of facilities in Prado. I think at that point in time, we may want to consider having them hold, executing a separate hold harmless indemnification agreement as to anything resulting from this flooding event that occurred last week.
Or do some soil, rain or something.
Yeah, or just a hold harmless indemnification. That's the condition of us accepting the conveyance.
Absolutely.
We may want to put that on all of our little lists for that time.
Anything else? May we dismiss the engineer? You're dismissed.
No, do that. Mr. Manager?
Just, you've already heard, new utilities managers accepted position starts Monday. Also, a question, Fourth of July, is everyone going to be here? We're going to have a quorum.
What day is July?
The, your meeting's on the seventh, and Fourth of July is that same week, Monday.
Fourth of July is on the fourth, right?
Right.
It's on Monday.
Fourth of July is on the fourth.
I'll be here.
Tuesday?
It's on the Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Yeah, it's Monday, and then you have a meeting on Thursday.
I'll be here.
Yeah, I should be here.
Okay.
Laura, are you taking off or what?
No, no, I, I, well, I might.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Gary, do you have anything?
Yeah, just brief. There was rather mentioned names publicly, but there was a young lady that forwarded me an email that came to her from another young lady regarding goings-on at the Fun Park in the evenings and pickup trucks and empty alcohol containers and certain.
Fair finale.
Certain other writings, et cetera. So I said to myself, self, it's time to me to reach out to a friend. And so I reached out to Lieutenant Chris Layler of the Lee County Sheriff's Department, who happens to be in charge at the central district, the central district handles Gateway. And after he and I had a lengthy conversation, and he asked me to send him an email, which I did, his response back was, "Thank you, Gary. I will ask the shift sergeants to have the troops beef up their patrols at the Fun Park and the Gateway area during requested days and times. Let me know if there's anything else that we can assist with." Thank you, Lieutenant Chris Layler. So we've got some extra patrols that are going to be watching the park. But I urge that staff kind of make sure and see if that makes a difference. And hopefully, the residents will let us know if that makes a difference.
And that's just part of the regular detail, right, Gary?
He's going to do, have the sergeants direct any other of the deputies that are in the area that aren't doing something more critical, especially on the weekends to, for those of you folks that are out there, you don't want to be there on the week, in the evenings. I got news for you.
And following up on that, April has been working with that, that whole issue about enforcement. And then there's a memorandum I just handed out. And at the next board meeting, bring back a resolution to the board to designate certain individuals and staff members with the authority to call towing operators and posting, you know, no parking in tow-away zones at the Fun Park, as well as some additional opportunities to assist in making sure that the proper elements are there.
Yes, and I was thinking about this because I read through that email as well, Gary, and, and had some correspondence. With our, we just talked about the, the contract that Stony Brook has that we're, that we approved with Alert or, you know, a security company. I'm wondering just if there's, how, what the amount would be hypothetically to piggyback off that contract and have a member of that security staff kind of dedicated to, to the district for set hours, whether it's evenings or weekends. You know, and, because I really think, Gary, that's a great first step. If that doesn't work, we may have to look at, you know, either securing sheriff detail, which we just stopped doing, or maybe an alternative, which is, you know, have our own security detail. I don't know if it's feasible. I don't know if you guys have ever talked about it before, but I would be curious to know exactly what, what it might cost us. Because this seems to be an ongoing issue, not only at the Fun Park, but maybe in some of the other locations as well. So, nothing more than just a, just a statement.
Okay. Are you finished, Gary?
Yep.
I have nothing.
No, I'm good. No, that's it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for your hard work this afternoon. We are adjourned.
We only get to go drive for fourteen hours.
Oh, my God. My parents used to play the game. One of you that can stay quiet the longest gets a dollar.
Dollars have no meaning these days.